Welcome. Hopefully that is loud enough. Good evening. Time being 5:30pm, we will get underway. A very warm welcome to everyone who is with us this evening. My name is Paula Reet, Mayor of Kingborough. My pleasure to welcome you all here tonight on Monday the 4th of August 2025. For those who are with us in the public gallery this evening and who are watching on YouTube. Being 5:30pm, I now officially declare the meeting open. Council now operates under the local government meeting procedures regulations of 2.5. Under these, I am required to advise you of that: A) An audio or audiovisual recording is being made of the meeting; B) All persons attending the meeting respectful of and considerate towards other persons at the meeting; C) Language and conduct at the meeting be perceived as offensive, performatory or threatening to a person attending the meeting. Listening to the reporting is acceptable. The audio recording of council meetings is made publicly available on our website and meetings I mentioned are also live streamed on YouTube. Now ask the CEO to confirm that the audio recording has started. Thank you. I wish to acknowledge the traditional custodians of this land, pay my respects to elders past and present, and acknowledge today's Tasmanian Aboriginal community. Our attendees this evening are myself, councillor Reet, Deputy Mayor councillor Gladewright, councillor Antoli, councillor Bain, councillor Cordova, councillor Dean, Kev, Lee and Kev Richardson. From our staff this evening, we have the CEO, Mr Stewart, Director of People and Finance, Mr Spinks, Director of Engineering Services, Mackie, Director of Governance, Recreation and Property Services, B, Director of Environment Development and Community Services, our Communications Officer, Mr Heather, our acting executive assistant, Jones, and we have apologies from councillors Reet and councillor Fox. That takes us to page one, confirmation of minutes. I'm looking for a mover and a seconder that the minutes of the open session of council meeting number 12, held on the 21st of July 2025, be confirmed as a true record. But a mover in councillor Bain and a seconder in councillor Antoli. All those in favour? Against? Alright. Workshops held since last council meeting? Not have a workshop last Monday. Declarations of interest. Any councillor have an interest they would like to declare? No, thank you very much. And transfer of agenda items. Is there any item on the agenda that a councillor would like to transfer from open into closed session or open session? Very much. Questions without notice from the public? Ask a question without notice? Thank you very much. Do the drill. Turn that one on. Just on the front there, it's got a little sort of a face. Thank you.
Mark Donellen from Huntingfield. My question's on street trees. The reality of subdivisions wiped out. Roads and houses. And a lot of the time, trees don't get planted. The nature strip guideline and policy says that residents trees without permit from council. Under what conditions might, do permits often get things would be considered trees to be planted in nature strip?
Here's Shakuti, pretty sure can help us with that one, although the look on her face does not reflect that sentiment.
Thank you.
That's not on. Ah. Sorry, the new microphones are coming in about three weeks.
Through you, mayor. So just a little bit of background. When subdivision approved, development applications, there often be missions around landscaping. And we do certain streetscape planting, obviously, as likely to resource range to reduce subdivision. In terms of buying to plant in that way, private council have not been involved in that process. I wonder if governance rotation, I imagine it's application by law to.
Just me.
Through you, mayor. Yes, there is a permit process required under our bylaw and that requires consideration of a number of factors. Underground services, overhead power lines, whether there's going to be potential for road widening in the area, ease of maintenance. So there are a number of considerations relating to whether council would give approval for planning of trees in a nature strip.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. There are no public galleries, so that is the question time. Questions on notice from the public? We did have quite a few. The first in relation to policy provisions with a response from Mr Mackie. Second one in relation to conflicting legislation from Mr Bush with a response from Asham. Third one from Mrs Roberts in relation to fencing and boundaries with a response from Carla Moore. The fourth one from Ms Harrison in relation to Brown's Road Works with a response from Mr Mackie. And the final one from Slenden on LPS representations with a response from Carla Moore. Questions without notice from councillors? Any councillor wish to ask a question without notice? And questions on notice from councillors at the time the agenda was compiled? There were no questions on notice from councillors. Takes us to page seven, petition still being actioned. There are no petitions still being actioned and at the time the agenda was compiled, no questions had been received. Takes us to page eight, offices reports to council, land lease seven, Pilvarata Road, Sandfly with a recommendation on page 10. And I'm looking for a mover and a seconder. A mover in the deputy mayor and a seconder in councillor Mitchley. Deputy mayor.
Thank you. So the purpose of this report is for the potential leasing of a piece of land in Sandfly. Parks have stated that they would be prepared to offer an initial 10-year lease with an option for a further 10 years at a peppercorn rental amount. After consideration, it is recommended that council enters a lease with the crown for the property. I don't see why we wouldn't. A sensible response to this situation, so I'm happy to support this recommendation.
Thank you very much. Further contributions? Councillor Bain?
Thank you, mayor. Just a quick question on this one. Do we know if any agreements are currently in place with any organisations ongoing building?
Mr Smith?
Through you, mayor. We're not aware of any current agreements that are in place. I doubt that they are, but we'd need to confirm that with the crown.
Any further discussion? No, otherwise I'm going to put the recommendation, it's moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by council. Those in favour? Against? Alright. Takes us to page 11, Kingborough disability inclusion and access policy with a recommendation on the following page. Looking for a mover and a seconder. I can't move it from the chair and councillor Fox, who is our other councillor on the committee, is not in the evening. Councillor Cordova. And they're moved by councillor Cordova, seconded by the deputy mayor. Councillor Cordova.
Thank you, mayor. It's a great privilege to be able to move the Kingborough disability inclusion and access policy. Basically, originally we endorsed this policy on the 14th of December 2020 and it's now come up for review. There have been some suggested changes that you can see throughout the report. But first and foremost, I just want to thank the members of the committee who have done a power of work in making Kingborough a more inclusive and accessible municipality to visit and to live in and to come. There's been some amazing projects, thinking of, you know, beach ramps and basically making sure that we do, we do everything we can to make Kingborough a welcoming place. And I think all the changes within the policy are really good. And Kingborough is, I think, better for, better for all the work that the committee is doing. So once again, I thank them and I look forward to contributions from others. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councillor Antoli?
Thank you, mayor. As a person that's worked extensively over the past decade, I want to congratulate the chronic pain conditions under the definition of disability and that's definitely something that I think is warranted. We have an aging population in Tasmania and we fight that. We have a strong mix of retirees down in Kingborough as well. And as a person that has definitely looked after two elderly parents with chronic pain, that needed a walker to just get around because of that pain, it's fantastic to see that that's recognised also, as it certainly is. And I have a question. The implementation section in section five talks about a commitment to web content accessibility guidelines. Could you, could someone unpack that for me as to what that actually means to the layperson?
Shakuti would love to.
Thank you. So there is standardized guidelines around developing and publishing information to ensure that it is accessible. Be listed as closed because banned it actually gets updated time to time. So it is on us as a cross member.
Councillor Antoli?
Thank you, mayor. So if an individual is, say, blind, are you saying that the, they can actually have the website read to them? Or let's say they put themselves, struggle to read that also part of what that means?
Mr Shakuti?
There. I'm not entirely sure. It is my understanding our content crafted and we'd council is the terms of Buffalo nation on our website and not just.
You know, I'm happy to obviously, of course, this mayor, on an unrelated issue, I'm just getting some messages from family members that are watching that director microphone dropping in and out. That's something that I just thought I'd let you know.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any further contributions on this?
I'll just make a couple of comments as chair of the access committee, which I've had the honour of bearing, I think, for about the last 14 years. Just to thank and acknowledge the members of the committee for the work that they do. We've got a range of different people on there at the moment with various lived experiences of disability and they all contribute significant work that we do. And as has already been mentioned, they're constantly championing different projects within the community that could be accessibility. And obviously the beach matting was one that was very high profile, but there have been other things that we've worked on over the years of that committee that don't have a big, big profile, but hopefully have assisted some people in the community. We did some brochures aimed at tourism businesses on how they could, particularly looking at how perhaps, you know, small Airbnbs and tour operators could improve their accessibility, the sorts of things they need to look for because there have been experiences that members of the committee have had where they are.
members of the committee have had, where they are perhaps reliant on a wheelchair or mobility device, person who's running the establishment pick the box to say fully accessible, and then they turn up and it's out, there's a lip to get into the shower, and they can't actually shower and things like that, so we set about doing a brochure set, so also done one on customer service for shops to try and get them to understand for different forms of disability and how they should try and interact with those people who do come in, how they can assist them more fully, so it's a very practical committee, and I appreciate all the work that they've done, and just on that point about living with chronic illness, we did put that, chronic pain, sorry, we did put that in, and it's not a common definition within disability, but we added that in several years ago because we have somebody who is a representative who is significantly impaired by severe arthritis, who sort of hit home to us that those sorts of invisible disabilities as well can really impair somebody's ability to get around the community, function in their day-to-day lives, so I think that was certainly a very important conclusion. So, yeah, I'd just like to thank the members of the committee for their input to our work on that. So councillor Cordova knows summing up, I'll put the recommendation then, moved by councillor Cordova and seconded by the deputy mayor. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried. That takes us to appendices with a recommendation on page 21, I'm looking for a mover and a seconder, please, got a mover in councillor Bain and a seconder in councillor Mitchley. Any discussion on the appendices? No, I'll put the recommendation then, moved by councillor Bain, seconded by councillor Mitchley. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried. Still on the same page, notices a motion, there were no notices of motion, that takes us, wow, in record time, in forty, sorry, 17 minutes, we've got two confirmation of items to be dealt with in closed session. In accordance with regulation 17 of the local government meeting procedures regulations 2025, council by absolute majority, move into closed session to consider the following items, confirmation of minutes, applications for leave of absence, tender assessment AB 2513, Channel Highway KFC to Whitewater Path upgrade, I'm looking for a mover and a seconder, please, I've got a mover in councillor Antoli and a seconder in councillor Mitchley. All those in favour? Against? No, the motion is carried. So, almost record time, I think we once did it in 23 minutes, so actually, in 18 minutes, that is the open session of council now finished, so in accordance with the Kingborough council meetings audio recording guidelines policy, recording of the open session will now cease. Thank you very much to the member of the community who is with us here this evening, and to all those who were watching along at home on YouTube, open session of council adjourned at 5.40.